Okay, it's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order if you would stand please for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Our first item is the approval of the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting held on September 14th. Does anyone have corrections to the minutes? And if not, do I have a motion to approve them as submitted?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lrendo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. At the beginning of each meeting, we have a comment period. If you are here for an item on the agenda, there will be a comment period in connection with that item. But if anyone has any general comments not related to an item on the agenda, now is the time to make them. And not seeing any, we will proceed with the agenda. Our first item is a small-scale future land use, Roper Family, from County Rural to Mixed Use. Owner Bert E. Roper and Barbara C. Roper Family Limited Partnership. Applicant is JCF Living, care of Tara Tedrow. Location west of State Route 429 and Binion Road, north of Hooper Farms Road. And we have a staff presentation.
Good evening. Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of a small-scale future land use amendment request from County Rural, one dwelling unit per 10 acres, to mixed use, 15 dwelling units per acre. Property is approximately 1.53 acres located west of State Road 429 and Binion Road and north of Hooper Farms Road.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll get it up shortly, I bet.
I request a sign of future land use designation of mixed use. It's compatible with the designations assigned to abutting properties. The applicant is also applying for mixed-use East Shore Gateway District zoning, which is compatible with the proposed mixed-use future land use. And it is the next item on your agenda. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the change in future land use. And the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the change in future land use designation from County Rural to mixed use, subject to the information and findings in the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, very good. Any questions of staff? Okay, and does the applicant want to make a presentation or just available for questions?
Hi, Tara Tedrow, Loudsaw 215 North Yola Drive, Orlando, Florida. No presentation on this one. It's really a cleanup item. It's an odd 1.5 acre parcel that needed to be annexed and didn't have a future land use or a zoning assigned. So this is really just sort of ministerial. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions of applicant?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. We'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the change of future land use designation from County Rural, one dwelling unit per 10 acres, to mixed use, 15 dwelling units per acre. The property owned by Bert E. Roper and Barbara C. Roper Family Limited Partnership, subject to the information and findings in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lrendo. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Our next item is rezoning, Roper Family, from County A1 Citrus Rural District to MUEDGT Mixed Use East Shore Gateway District. Owner Bert E. Roper and Barbara C. Roper Family Limited Partnership. Applicant JCF Living, care of Tara Tedrow, west of State Route 429 and Binion Road, north of Hooper Farms Road. And we have a staff presentation.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to change the zoning of a property from County A1 Citrus Rural to Mixed Use East Shore Gateway Zoning District. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from County A1 to MUESGT Zoning District. And the proposed MUESGT zoning is compatible with the property due to the zoning being found in the vicinity. DRC recommends approval and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from County A1 to MUESGT Zoning District. Staff and applicant are again available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff or the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. We'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, since I made the motion on the first one, I might as well do this.
Okay, that's the deal.
I recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from County 1A Citrus Rural, zoning district to MU-EDASGT Mixed Use East Shore Gateway Zoning District for the property owned by Bert E. Roper and Barbara C. Roper Family Limited Partnership.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lrendo. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a comprehensive plan, small-scale future land use amendment for 2451 Appy Lane, from residential, very low suburban, to agriculture. The owner applicant is Robert and Mary Singh. The location is 2451 Appy Lane. And we have a staff presentation.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner 2 with the city's planning division. The applicant is proposing a small-scale future land use amendment from residential, very low suburban, to agriculture for approximately 4.92 acres. The subject property is highlighted in yellow and located off of Appy Lane. Single-family homes and agricultural properties are in the vicinity, along with the Northwest Recreation Complex located to the south. The property is zoned RSF 1A, residential, single-family estate district. And the applicant has applied for agriculture zoning district, which is on the next agenda item.
Right.
The proposed agriculture future land use is compatible with the proposed agriculture zoning district in addition to the agricultural properties within the vicinity, which includes the parcels to the west and east that have the agriculture zoning. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the small-scale future land use amendment to agriculture. And the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed future land use amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the change of future land use designation from residential, very low suburban, to agriculture, subject to the findings of the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff or the applicant?
No, sir.
Um, Phil, the across on the south side of this property on Appy Lane, it's a huge lot adjacent to the northwest athletic fields. You know that, right? What is, how is that zone?
This land area is part of the Northwest Recreation Complex Greater Parcel, and it is zoned office. It's zoned office.
Office?
Office. Yeah, it used to be professional office dash institutional in the old zoning district, or in the old zoning code. And then in this new zoning code, it's office.
Okay, other questions of staff or the applicant? Okay, thank you. We'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the request to apply the future land use designation of agriculture, one dwelling unit per acre, per five acres, sorry, for the property owned by Robert and Mary Singh, located north of Appy Lane and west of Jason Dwelly Parkway.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, now for that same piece of property, we have a change of zoning, 2451 Appy Lane, from RSF 1A Residential Single Family Estate District to AG Agriculture District. Owner applicant is Robert and Mary Singh. Location 2451 Appy Lane. We have a staff presentation.
You just about gave my presentation all right there. The applicant is proposing a rezoning from RSF 1A Residential Single Family Estate District to Agriculture District for approximately 4.92 acres in the same subject property as the previous agenda item. The proposed agriculture zoning is compatible with the previously proposed agriculture future land use. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the proposed rezoning to Agriculture District. And the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from RSF 1A Residential Single Family Estate District to AG Agriculture District for the property owned by Robert and Mary Singh, located north of Appy Lane and west of Jason Dwelly Parkway. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? Or any questions of the applicant, if the applicant is here?
I'm here.
Okay. Okay. Sounds like you're getting off easy. I don't think we have any questions. Okay, then we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from RSF 1A Residential Single Family Estate District to AG Agriculture District for the property owned by Robert and Mary Singh, located north of Appy Lane and west of Jason Dwelly Parkway.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously.
See you in November.
Okay.
See you in November for the council meetings.
Great, thanks. Our next item is a change of zoning, 2616 Martin Road, from RSF 1A Residential Single Family Estate District to RSF 1B Residential Single Family District, large lot. The owner is Nanak Investments LLC. The applicant is GL Summit Engineering, Inc., care of Jeffrey L. Summit PE. Location is 2616 Martin Road. And we have a staff presentation.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to change the zoning of a property from RSF 1A Residential Single Family Estate District to RSF 1V Residential Single Family Large Lot District. The property is located at 2616 Martin Road. It is approximately 8.81 acres. Current zoning is, the current zoning is RSF 1A, and the request to rezone to RSF 1B accommodates, I'm sorry, is consistent with the future land use of residential law. Development Review Committee recommends approval of the proposed change of zoning from RSF 1A to RSF 1B. And the recommended motion tonight is to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from RSF 1A to RSF 1B for a property owned by Nanak Investments LLC, subject to the information and findings of the staff report.
Okay, very good. Any questions of staff? Does the applicant have a presentation?
I don't believe that.
Okay, okay. And seeing none, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? Okay, and seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from RSF-1A Residential Single Family Estate District to RSF-1B Residential Single Family Large Lot District for the property owned by Maymac Investments LLC, subject to the information and findings in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is for a special exception to allow outdoor storage in the IL Light Industrial Zoning District for property located at 3676 Hogshead Road. The owner is 3676 Hogshead LLC. Applicant is Tara Tedrow. Location is 3676 Hogshead Road. And this is a quasi judicial item for the Planning Commission, so I will ask if anyone wishes to request affected party status for this item. And seeing none, I'll ask the commissioners if anyone has had ex parte communications on this item.
No, sir.
Okay, and hearing none, we'll proceed with a staff report.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request, this is a special exception request to allow outdoor storage in the IL Light Industrial Zoning District for property located at 3676 Hogshead Road. The property is located west of Hermit Smith Road and south of Hogshead Road. Area of the property shows that this project site is surrounded by agricultural facilities. The property is also surrounded by light industrial zone parcels. The proposed special exception will be in compliance with all above reference standards. The outdoor, the outdoor storage areas will also be paved. The DRC recommends approval of the request, and the recommended motion is to approve the special exception to allow outdoor storage in the IL Light Industrial Zoning District for property located at 3676 Hogshead Road. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of the staff or applicant?
Outdoor providing an opportunity for outdoor storage. What kind of storage?
I will, we have asked the applicant, I will go ahead and defer over to the applicant to respond.
Okay, and again, if you'd just come up and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Tara Tedrow, again, 215 North Yola Drive, Orlando, Florida. It's undetermined at this point. My client's purchasing both of these properties on Hogshead, it's the other one on the agenda right after this one, and upgrading both of the sites. Not 100% sure who the end user is going to be. We're not changing the building structure on this site. And actually, there's already outdoor storage there today. But when I looked at the site, I said, you can't do that without a special exception. So he wanted to make sure. He complied with code upon acquisition of the property, and is coming in to ask for a special exception. Whatever is stored outdoors, we have some specific criteria in the staff report, that it can't be above the fencing if it's within a certain amount of feet from the fencing. So it'll be fully screened from view. And the site will now finally be compliant with the code on landscaping and fencing around the perimeter. So it'll certainly be a significant upgrade from what we have today. I had a presentation. I'm not sure if there's more specific questions. I know you have a long agenda, but I'm happy to give that if you wanted or if you have other questions.
So I think that the storage doesn't consist of mobile devices, vehicles, trucks, I think? Is more materials?
It's likely more materials on this one, because it's a small building used right now for a plumbing business. So they just have piping laid down outside of the building. So we are acquiring that, and I'm sure it's going to be similar in nature. But again, we have a six-foot-high fence that's going to go along the perimeter of the property right now from public right-of-way. It's a chain-link fence. And so we're actually going to be fixing the access into the site, which is substandard, adding opaque fencing along the frontage to block the view that exists today of everything already being stored outside, and then have enhanced landscaping all along the perimeter of the property, including that right-of-way frontage.
Okay, further questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the special exception to allow outdoor storage in the IL Light Industrial Zoning District for property located at 3676 Hogshead Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is another special exception to allow outdoor storage in the IL Light Industrial Zoning District for property located at 4301 Hogshead Road. The owner is Chori Holdings II LLC, applicant Tara Tedrow, location 4301 Hogshead Road. And we have a staff presentation. Well, I should again ask, however, if anyone seeks affected party status on this item. And seeing none, hearing none, I'll ask commissioners if anyone has had ex parte communications on this item.
No, sir.
Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed with a staff presentation.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a special exception request to get to allow outdoor storage in the IL Light Industrial Zoning District for property located at 4301 Hogshead Road. Property is located north of Hogshead Road and west of US 441. Area of the property shows that this project site is also surrounded by agricultural facilities. Property is also surrounded by light industrial zone parcels. The concept plan shows the parcel subdivided into three lots. Each lot includes a building structure and would include outdoor storage, and the outdoor storage areas will also be paved. The proposal will be subject to additional development reviews such as major development plan, construction site plan, and flat reviews. This is the special exception review standards, and the applicant must comply with all these standards listed above. The DRC recommends approval of the request, and the recommended motion is to approve a special exception to allow outdoor storage in the IL Light Industrial Zoning District for 4301 Hogshead Road. Staff and applicant are once again available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff or applicant? Okay, thank you very much. We'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I approve a special, a special exception to allow outdoor storage in the IL Light Industrial Zoning District for property located at 4301 Hogshead Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lrendo. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor, aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay. All right, our next item is a major development plan, Clerkona Office Warehouse. The owner is Technology Property LLC. The applicant is Andrew Gerdom PE. Location is 82860 Clerkona Road, 2870 Clerkona Road, and 476 Jellystone Avenue. And we have a staff presentation.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Clerkona Office Warehouse Major Development Plan. The project is, the project property is located on the southwest corner of Keene Road and Clerkona Road. The aerial shows that the project is east adjacent of the existing Jellystone Park Camp Resort. Project site consists of an assemblage of three parcels totaling 9.41 acres. Properties are zoned IL and have a future land use designation of commercial, allowing up to .25 floor area ratio. The proposed development has a floor area ratio of .24. The applicant proposes two warehouse buildings, each containing 48,000 square feet of warehouse and office areas for a total of 96,000 square feet. Buildings will be rear-loaded with a core area positioned between them. Truck parking will also be contained between the buildings. Therefore, truck parking will not visible from, will not be visible from adjacent properties or the public right-of-way. There will be no outdoor storage use. Site will be accessed from Clerkona Road. Right and left turn lanes will be installed at the site entrances. Shown are the proposed architectural renderings for the buildings, which meets the city's development design guidelines. Landscaping plan also meets the landscaping code. Sycamores, live oaks, red maples, and southern magnolias are provided within the 25-foot-wide northern boundary of the project site. Live oaks and red maples are alternatively planted within the parking landscaping islands. Hollies, grape myrtles, and drake elm trees are shown within the 15-foot-wide landscaping buffer adjacent to Clerkona Road. Live oaks and red maple trees will border the said buffer along the right-of-way. A 25-foot-wide landscaping buffer is proposed within the southern boundary containing live oaks, red maples, drake elms, and holly trees. DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Clerkona Office Warehouse Major Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, very good. Any questions of staff or the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. We'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find the Clerkona Warehouse Office Major Development Plan consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and recommend approval of the major development plan based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ryan. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a major development plan, The Ridge. Owners are Troy S. Bronson LP, John and Donna Marie Kirkland, Binion Partners LLC, and Apopka Centerline Development LLC. The applicant is VHB, care of John Prowell PE. Location is north and south of Boy Scout Road, west of State Route 451. We have a staff presentation.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of The Ridge Phase 1 that includes parcels 2, 4, 5, and 8, major development plan. The project site is located north and south of Boy Scout Road and west of State Route 451. The entire planned development area is approximately 366 acres. Phase 1 consists of development of 275 acres. Shown is the master plan previously approved by City Council on July 21, 2021. Consistent with the approved master plan, the applicant proposes to develop parcels 2, 4, 2 and 4 for residential uses, parcel 5 for industrial use, and parcel 8 for the central amenity and recreational uses. Phase 1 will also include the construction of Streets A and B, a parallel facility of the Boy Scout Road. The trail connection on Boy Scout Road from Binion Road along Streets A and B to the eastern limit of parcel 8. Waste water and utility extensions, water and reclaimed water connections, and off-site improvements. It is shown in the red color. Shown is the overall site plan for Phase 1. Parcel 2 comprises of 79.2 acres in which the applicant proposes a combination, a combination of single- A combination of single-family detached units and townhome units for a total of 313 units. The single-family detached units are placed along the perimeter of Parcel 2. The amenity area is centrally located within the parcel, so it has its own amenity area. The amenity area contains a pool and a clubhouse. On-street parking is provided along at least three thoroughfares. Additional parking spaces surround three sides of the amenity area. Pockets of open spaces are located adjacent to the end units within this part of the development. Each detached, single-family residential lot complies with the landscaping requirements of the Land Development Code, providing three trees per lot. Drake elm, red maple, and magnolia trees are to be planted within pockets of open space within Parcel 2. Parcel 4 will consist of 200... I'm sorry. 268 units, a combination of single-family detached homes and townhome units on 58.3 acres. The applicant has assigned connectivity between the north and south portions of the development through a boulevard that connects Parcel 2 and 4. As with Parcel 2, single-family detached units are also located along the perimeter of the parcel boundaries, while the townhome units are in the central portion of the parcel. Rear-loaded, single-family lots will have 1,500 square feet of living area, and front-loaded, single-family lots will have 1,600 square feet of living area. Townhome units will have a minimum living area of 1,300 square feet. A separate amenity area is assigned on the southern boundary of the parcel with a pool and a playground. It is adjacent to the existing lake and pond. Landscaping for Parcel 4 includes live oak, magnolias, sycamores, red maples, cabbage palm trees placed within the ponds and surrounds the open space amenity areas of Parcells 2 and 4. Magnolias and oaks will be located along the connection between Parcel 2 and 4. The applicant offers these architectural renderings for their residential products. And staff has reviewed these architectural renderings, and they are consistent with the city's development design guidelines. Parcel 5 contains industrial uses on five buildings, broken up into four phases and will be accessed via two separate points along Spine Road, aka Street A. Buildings 100 and 200 are included in Phase 1, and the access aisles into this portion of the development will also be constructed within Phase 1. Building 500 is intended to be in Phase 1A, and Building 300 is proposed to be Phase 2. Phase 3 consists of Building 400. Buildings 100 and 200 is approximately 146,900 square feet. Each in size are located in the southern area of the parcel. Building 300 with approximately 116,000 square feet of area are oriented along the eastern portion of Parcel A. I'm sorry, of Street A. The largest buildings, Building 400 and 500, each will have over 420,000 square feet of area. Parcel 5 landscaping consists of live oaks at the end of parking rows, landscaped parking islands internal to the roads who will be replaced with more diverse understory trees. Entrances along Street A and one entrance on the eastern boundary of the parcel are embellished with bald cypress trees. The drive aisle between Buildings 500 and 400 are adorned with alternating clusters of sable palms and crepe myrtles. The drive aisle running west to east are decorated with live oaks and crepe myrtles, and the western and southern perimeters are lined with live oaks. Shown is the elevation of the proposed buildings within Parcel 5. Situated on the central portion of the PD development that includes the existing lake, Parcel 8 is approximately 59.64 acres in size and serves as the amenity and open space area for the entire project. Consistent with the approved master plan, Parcel 8 encompasses a visitor and bicycle parking, covered picnic area, dog park, community garden, pavilion dock with viewing and fishing pier, playground area, outdoor seating areas, bike paths, pedestrian walking paths with benches. Parcel 8 has a vehicular access point on Street A. Pedestrian access is available around the parcel boundary via the proposed trail. The trail runs along Street A, the perimeter of Parcel 8, through Parcells 2, 4, and connects Binion Road and Boy Scout Road. Live oaks, magnolias, sycamore, red maple, bald cypress, drake elms, and cabbage palm trees are placed within the pond and surrounds the open space amenity areas. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to find The Ridge Phase 1, Parcells 2, 4, 5, and 8, Major Development Plan consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and recommend approval of the plan subject to the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibit. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions of staff or the applicant? Okay.
In the staff report that we received, when you spoke about Parcel 4, the staff report says it's 220, 220 single-family detached homes.
Plus... Plus townhomes. Right, 220, single-family detached plus the townhomes.
Two different products.
So you're adding the numbers together to get to 260? So you have 220?
268. 220 plus 48 townhomes on the staff.
Okay, that's what you meant, okay. Now, probably two or three months ago, I can't recall, Chief McKinley had an issue with the compatibility of the project with surrounding areas.
There was another product just northwest of here. This is a... It's 366 acres, and it kind of stands by itself because it does have Coe and Popka on the east and Binion Road on the west and 429, 414 on the south side. So it's... It basically creates its own pocket for a major development. It's not like McKinley... Chief McKinley was looking at with the other one where it had single families on the outside and townhomes on the inside, and that was a little bit different than just the single family that had previously been approved with the vistas over on Binion Road. So it's a... He actually told me that this type of product is... He's not that concerned about it because it creates its own... Its own, basically, village, I guess you'd say.
Self-contained, so?
Yeah. Good memory, though.
Who is God? Where you the Apopka chief? I don't know about you.
Okay, further questions? Okay, thank you very much. Then we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I find The Ridge Phase 1-Parcell 2, 4, 5, and 8, Major Development Plan consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and recommend approval of the Major Development Plan subject to the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a major development plan, Avian Point Parcel B2 Multifamily. Owner is Apopka Clear Lake Investments LLC. The applicant is Taurus Investment Holdings LLC, care of John Herbert, PE. Location is 2500 Gallinule Drive. And we have a staff presentation.
Good evening, Allison Williams, Planner 1 with the city's Planning Division. The subject property is located east of State Route 429 and west of Grand Avian Parkway at 2500 Gallinule Drive within the Avian Point Plan Development. The Major Development Plan details the development of a proposed apartment complex consisting of 276 units on 30.4 acres. Parcel B2 was approved for 480 units within the PD Master Plan, while 276 units are being proposed in the first phase. A maximum building height of 50 feet and a minimum living area of 762 square feet has been proposed by the applicant. The applicant is proposing 138 one-bedroom or studio apartments with a minimum living area of 762 square feet, 123 two-bedroom apartments with a minimum living area of 1,160 square feet, and 15 three-bedroom apartments with a minimum living area of 1,375 square feet. Six apartment buildings and 10 garages are proposed in the first phase of the multifamily development. 483 parking spaces are required, while 486 are being provided, with 80 spaces and garages and 16 accessible parking spaces. Pursuant to Policy 16.2 of the future land use element of the Comprehensive Plan, 20% of the parking spaces provided must consist of pervious material. In accordance with the approved master plan, amenities include five park areas, a clubhouse, swimming pool, dog park, playground, and a community garden. Development of the subject property is in compliance with the Avian Point PD Master Plan and the Land Development Code. The site will be accessed via Gallinule Drive and Grand Avian Parkway. The applicant is required to construct a secondary access point within 24 months concurrently with the second phase of the apartment complex. The applicant has committed to conducting transportation impact analysis after Phase 1 of the development is constructed and 10% occupied to access the impacts of Phase 1 and Phase 2. The findings of the study will determine what transportation improvements are required to mitigate the impacts of both project phases. The mitigation will be required to be constructed concurrent with the construction of Phase 2, and must be operational before Phase 2 receives its first certificate of occupancy. The applicant proposes live oaks, cypress trees, southern magnolias, crepe myrtles, and Sylvester palms within the development. Shown are the proposed architectural elevations. DRC recommends approval. Staff recommends approval, subject to the condition that was noted at DRC. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Avian Point B2 Multifamily Major Development Plan, subject to the condition that was noted at DRC regarding the findings of the study determining what transportation improvements are required to mitigate the impacts of both project phases. The mitigation will be required to be constructed concurrent with the construction of Phase 2 and must be operational before Phase 2 receives its first certificate of occupancy. Staff and applicant are here to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions of staff or the applicant?
The applicant.
The applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, if we could have the applicant come up and give you... Give us your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Jason Mahoney with NV5 Incorporated, 201 South Bumbia Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 32803. And we are the civil engineer of record.
It says here a stormwater pond. Is that a retention pond or a detention pond?
Yes, sir. So I don't have the site plan up on the screen, but the center one is a detention pond, and there is a pond on the south perimeter and a pond in the northeast corner that are retention ponds.
Okay, is there any government loans involved in this project?
What was the question again? I'm sorry.
Is there any government loans involved in this project?
I don't believe so.
You mean you don't think so?
No, there isn't.
Can you step up and answer the question, please?
Okay, and if you would, give us your name and address also for the record.
Sherri Smith, Taurus Investment Holdings, 610 North Wymore Road, Maitland, Florida, 32751. And no, there is no government loans involved in this.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I move that we recommend approval of Avian Point B2 Multifamily Major Development Plan, subject to the condition that was noted at DRC regarding the findings of the study determining what transportation improvements are required to mitigate the impacts of both project phases. Mitigation will be required to be constructed concurrent with the construction of Phase 2 and must be operational before Phase 2 receives its first certificate of occupancy.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is the plant for Nottingham Park. The owner is FTI Funding LLC. The applicant is KPRC Ponkin Road LLC, care of Appian Engineering LLC. Location is 3515 and 3081 Ponkin Road. And we have a staff presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Applicants requesting approval of a plat for 46 lot subdivision located at 3515 and 3081 Ponkin Road. Plat is consistent with the approved lot sizes on the approved major development plan, construction site plans, and is consistent with Florida's chapter... Florida statutes, Chapter 177. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, and the recommended motion tonight is recommend approval of the Nottingham Plat. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff or the applicant? Seeing none, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Nottingham Park Plat.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lrendo. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is the plant for South Muse at Avian Point. Owner is Apopka Clear Lake Investments, Clear Lake Investments LLC. Applicant is Allen and Company, care of Maravet Rodriguez. Location is Parcel B3, Avian Point PD, located south of Peterson Road and east of State Route 429. We have a staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, Bobby Howell. Applicants requesting approval of a plat for 102 lot townhome subdivision located on Parcel B3 of the Avian Point Development. Plat is consistent with the approved lot sizes and the approved master plan, final development plan, and is consistent with Florida statutes, Chapter 177. Development Review Committee recommends approval, and the recommended motion tonight is to recommend approval of the South Muse, South Muse at Avian Point Plat. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff or applicant?
Yes, why is it not showing up on my agenda?
What do you mean?
It's not showing up here. It's... The last thing I have is the Avian Point.
It's the South Muse at Avian Point. It's site plan number five.
The last two are not showing up here.
It's in my packet. You may have to reboot. I've got it on mine, and we do have it on here, so...
I just rebooted when I got here. You got it on yours?
Yeah, it was on ours. Yeah.
Mine's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. That's weird. See, I got page 290 is the last page I have. What page do you have? What's your last page?
Well, I'm looking at... Well, I don't know. I'm looking at page 279. That's what I have on 279, and that's the middle of this discussion.
Yeah, if you look at your packet, the plat is on page 280.
Yeah.
280 through 280.
Avian Point.
And my last page is 290.
Yeah, the plat actually starts on 280, so...
And 290 is this school board exhibit stating they have concurrency.
Can you show it on the screen?
276 starts the Avian Point. I'm on.
Okay, that's where the staff report begins.
Yep, that's right. You're right. Go page by page. You should have it if you got 290. It's on the screen, too.
Yeah, I see it on the screen. I just don't see it on my iPad. Well, now it shows up. Okay, I guess I just didn't load properly. Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Further questions? Okay. All right, we'll close the presentation and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the South Muse at Avian Point Plat.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Do we have any old business?
I have a little bit of old and a little bit of new.
Okay.
City did get its 2020... The city did get its 2020 census estimate, and it came in at 54,873.
Wow.
I talked with the people over at the Bureau of Economics, also known as Bieber, that are in contract with the state to do the estimates, and they are expecting to get the April 2021 estimates sent out this Friday. So at the next city council meeting, we'll be able to report what the estimated population is in addition to the 2020 population. I'm expecting us to break 55,000 in the city as of April 2021 this year.
Okay.
So we are growing. It's not just residential, although we are getting a lot. As you see, you all see probably this faster and in more detail than just anybody else regards to the industrial warehousing and some of the commercial projects that we've got coming. So I just want to say thank you all for your service here and taking the time to go through all the details for these plans and asking the questions that you do. I appreciate it a lot.
I think we have to thank the staff, too, because you guys make it a lot easier for us, for sure.
Good.
Yes. Does the city deal directly with HUD now that they have more than 50,000 population? Or do you still go through Orange County?
Typically, there's more opportunities for grants. We haven't explored it too much right now. The county is our main recipient from the state funds that are channeled through the federal government for a lot of those, like even some of the news that came out. They're the ones that are handling the majority of the money, and it's easier for them to do it because they have the staff that can actually handle those funds.
Yeah, because David Moon told me, once Apopka reached 50,000, you could deal directly with HUD instead of going through Orange County.
We can, but again, if we had the staff to be able to do it, that's the problem, that we don't. I have four planners that work besides myself and in our planning department. We don't have a specialized housing department, and I don't know any cities that really do, unless you start getting into the 75,000 to 100,000 population.
And I think that the overall job of everyone here who makes decisions regarding this, you know, be it DRC, Planning Commission, City Council, everybody, we want to keep Apopka as the best place on earth to live, work, and play.
Yep.
That's always been our mantra.
That's the ad I abide by.
If we start getting too crowded, it's not going to be good.
Correct. Yep.
Was that both the old and the new business, or do we have new business?
I'm done.
Okay, in that case, there being no further business to come before the commission, we'll be adjourned.